Testing, testing, testing. Testing, testing, testing. Testing, 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 testing. Thanks.
Take Amanda's. Isn't she on vacation?
If 2021, I would like Dan to present our invocation and I will rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Dan?
Lord, we acknowledge your presence among us tonight. We know you're always with us. We pray for your guidance during this meeting. Give us the wisdom to work in the best interest of everyone in our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Boy, is that great to do the pledge of allegiance with everybody saying it. That's a great thing. We took some things for granted before. I would like Dan to call the roll.
Becker?
Here.
Sauter?
Here.
McBain?
Here.
Listen?
Here.
Patilio?
Here.
Banner?
On Zoom.
Here.
Willard?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Okay. You have received in your packet minutes of the June 15th 2021 meeting, our regular meeting, and then also receive the July 10th 2021 special meeting minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion for the June 15th meeting. Okay. Is there any corrections or suggestions? Recommend changes? Otherwise, those who stand approved is submitted. And now we'll take a look at the July 10th special meeting minutes that have been given to you. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none, they will be accepted as submitted. There are some fun things you get to do up here, and this is one of them. And I would like to read a proclamation. Whereas Rick Garrity became a fireman for the City of Columbia Fire Department in December 1979, and in January 2006, he was appointed to the fire chief and has served as fire chief until his retirement date of June 30, 2021. Whereas his commitment to the department's safety and training and the safety of our community has earned him the admiration and high regard of those with whom he has come into contact with and the affection of his fellow public servants. And whereas during his term as fire chief, he accomplished many things, including the acquisition of a ladder truck for the department and the new fire station number two on the south side of our city. He dedicated a great amount of time planning for the betterment of our growing community. Whereas he has decades of knowledge of our community, the Columbia Fire Department and fire industry, Rick always accepted the ever-evolving administrative duties of his position by both local and state accords. All of this will be very difficult to replace. Now, therefore, we, the council of the City of Columbia, on behalf of all city employees and the citizens of our community, wish to recognize and congratulate Rick Garrity on his well-deserved retirement after many years of dedicated service to our community. Rick, we hope you know that we really meant those words. We do appreciate everything that you did for this community and how concerned you were for the community. That was the biggest thing I noticed. Whenever I talk to you about an issue, you were very concerned to make sure to make the right decision, and we appreciate that. And I'm sure my fellow councilmen feel the same way. Do you, did you want to make a speech?
Not a speech, no. I just want to thank everyone. I've enjoyed all the years here in the city, being in the fire department. No regrets whatsoever.
Good. Thank you very much. And good luck to you, wherever that takes you, and your wife.
Yep.
Yeah, we're gonna miss you.
Yeah, Rick, we're gonna miss you. He's, it is gonna be hard to fill his place and appreciate everything you've done. Been working for you, with you for 20 years in September, so, yeah.
Just thoroughly enjoy it. Take time for yourselves now.
Okay. Under reports of commissions and board, the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting minutes of July 8, 2021 were submitted to you. Any questions or comments on those minutes? Hearing none will be accepted as submitted. And you also received copies of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of July 13, 2021. Any questions or comments about those minutes? And they will stand, accepted as submitted. We'll move to the recognition of persons desiring to appear. And the first one I have on the list is Jacob Sevek with the American Legion to discuss the 2021 Columbia Street Fair. Jake?
Thanks. Good evening. Chief retired. You gonna do the parade one more time? Before everybody and Amanda, sorry, I put emailed a copy to you or got you a copy of this ahead of time, but didn't know anyone could be here. Just, we're gonna go through and everything finalized with the city. The street fair will be September 9th, 10th, and 11th, 2021, the same weekend as usual, be our 134th fair. When it comes to closures, obviously, it'll be all South Main Street from the circle to Railroad Street for the duration of the fair with closures starting Wednesday at 12 o'clock from Union Street on Main, South Main, to Railroad Street to allow the tent to get set up. That's the biggest process. And then closing down the rest of Main Street at 5:30 to allow one businesses to close and customers to leave, so we're not interrupting with them with acquisition and beginning of setup for the rest of the fair at 6 o'clock. Also, AAA parking lot used by the rides company, the to begin use Tuesday night into Wednesday. We'll also be doing the parade Thursday evening, September 9th, kicking off approximately 6:15 PM from the park. There'll be some meetings about that with the fire department auxiliary and explorers now that Kevin's also retired. Permission to use Firestone Park parking lots for shuttle parking on September 10th and 11th, not to interfere with football game or pavilion rentals if there's are taking place. And a waiver of the fare fee of $25 and concession fee for food vendors for the fair. That'll be, that are, we have here in town. Like to thank you for your cooperation. And then the other side is permission to hang a banner across North Main on or about August 22nd to be removed at the conclusion of the fair. Those should be within the guidelines that were set up prior to this year's, several years ago, in the minutes for that. Last, and one addendum on here, you see on the last page of closure list, I kind of broke it all down for everybody real quick and for the press. The last thing is traffic control, and I actually had forgotten about this until I was reading through everything. In 2019, we had a excessive amount of heavy traffic in the sense of semis, dump trucks, those types of vehicles. And with city workers putting up, putting out cans and benches, electrical department up there putting in the boxes. It really created a lot of traffic problems because they can't get all the way through. And one of the things Lance and I can discuss and with Jesse or can talk about now is if possible, we can get something at the top of South Main to divert truck traffic either to Vine or Elm Street to get down and around instead of down Main Street or Wednesday as well, because that was quite a, quite a lot of heavy traffic. Thanks.
Jake, are we okay with the, the electric because of the new Columbia corridor? I mean, not because it's there, but because the trucks usually come up those, their small alleys.
That alley there, the corridors that is occupying the, the one vendor who is there, he asked me, because he'd seen to work and asked if it, is that permanent? I was like, yes, it's permanent. So it's just, it is what it is. No, that shouldn't be an issue for anybody, electrical or non, because they can, anything they park, they can park beyond the back end of that alley. And then the vendor, we can, the one vendor that is in that space that sits perpendicular to the road, they can be hand-trucked in.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions?
I'd like to, we approve the request for the street fair as presented.
I'll second that. Okay, motion second. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
One last one. Jake, did you say that you're gonna be doing the parade starting at the park?
Yes, where it usually starts. Starts from the pool.
Okay.
The, the main part of the parade is from the pool parking lot area, and then the antique cars are in the lower lot by the tennis court.
Okay, you take into account all of the changes in the
That's where the other meetings that are not your problem come into effect.
Do you want to include the waiver of the $25 fee in this motion?
Yeah, he, he made that comment.
Okay.
Requested. He didn't say it quite the way I would have said it. It was obvious.
Yeah, the waiver, the, it's the, the fee to hold a fair, $25 and the concession fee, that was food truck fee, whatever.
Banner in your motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, everything is presented.
Okay. Are you getting that DM? You're okay? Okay, the motion's been extended a little bit, but I think we all know the thought behind it. Any other questions or comments on the motion?
Well, say I did message Lance the other day because they did the interview with WKBN and WITV. And the one part that they actually put in was the part I wanted to make sure I told Lance was, I did tell them we're coming to council, which was the part they actually showed of my interview, so. So before, I was like, I don't want anybody thinking I'm, I'll be there. It's coming up.
Very good. Any other comments? Dan, you call the roll?
Becker?
Yes.
Sauter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Hey, thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Next, we have Renee Durbin of the Columbia Chamber of Commerce Commerce to discuss a block party to be held on Saturday, August 7th, 2021, from 1:00 to 4:00.
Correct. Renee? Okay, well, this is my first time, so hopefully I can do this correctly.
We can be rough, Renee, so.
Excuse me?
We can be rough, so.
I don't bite, so. I'm a director of the chamber. We are in the Community Connections Committee, so we hold the block parties here in town. This is our second one that we want to have, and it's gonna be a hippie fest theme that we want to have on Saturday, August 7th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. We want to close the street down from 12:00 to 5:00. And we'll be closing the street down from the circle to the AAA building. Having food vendors, artisan crafts, DJ, pretty much like we had the last time, and we'll be seeking your permission.
Did you want to have the Dora event with that?
It will be a Dora event as well. Yes, yes, so it will be a Dora event. Thank you. I have that written there and didn't read it.
Okay, she did that succinctly. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lots of seconds. Okay, we have a motion second. Now, is there any questions or comments on what Renee has presented? Hearing none, we'll call the roll.
Sauter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Thank you, Renee. Appreciate coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Tom Makel's is here representing the Tourism Bureau. I want to talk about the Uncorked Project.
Thank you. Yes, I am representing Columbia Area Tourism Bureau. And one of our major events that we have besides Joy Christmas is the Wine Festival. We no longer call it that because festivals were illegal last year, so we changed the name to Columbia Uncorked. And would like to ask your permission to have our event on Saturday, September 25th from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM, again at Firestone Farms. It will be the same type of event that we had last year, although we capped it last year at 600 people because of COVID. And this year, we're thinking about maybe capping it at 1,200 people. We have six wineries that have signed up, and we have a number, maybe 10 vendors and three food trucks. And we're really excited about the, you know, they have a real non-COVID, hopefully, party this year. It's also very important to tourism. The, we, we, thanks to the efforts of our sponsors and the help that they gave us, we made a profit of $15,000 last year. And that is the, you know, an important source of funding to pay for the tourism's activities, which is 100% supporting Columbia and everything that, that happens in Columbia. So. Any questions?
I just want to point a clarification. Since this is on private property, you're not, you're not asking the city to do anything, right? Are you asking us to provide anything?
No, we're not asking anything.
So we don't, probably don't actually need to approve it, right? But I think maybe we can, and I'm gonna go ahead and move to waive any food truck fees for the, for the event.
I'll second that motion. There's a second. Any other?
I'll just add, good luck. It's a fun event every year, so looking forward to getting it back up to really what it can be.
Yeah, we're really excited. We have good entertainment this year.
You always put in a good show, Tom.
We try.
You know, I would just like to say that I don't know how much you realize how fantastic a job the Area Tourism Bureau's doing with the projects that, that they run. And, you know, just like last year's light show, unbelievable. The board is very good, and we've got a control over the finances. We're trying to do, run projects to bring people into Columbia. And I think it's a great organization, and they're doing a fantastic job. So I just want to make that comment. Okay, so we had a motion.
In a second.
In a second. Any further discussion? Dan, you call the roll?
Yes.
Listen?
Yes.
Patilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauter?
Yes.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, we're moving to the manager's report. I'll turn it over to Lance at this point.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing on my list was to talk about Zoom. We are going to Amber's gonna be stepping down, and so actually, I'm taking over for her tonight. So if I look a bit distracted, that's, that's what I'm doing up here. So we're gonna try to find somebody to help us administer the meetings, so somebody doesn't have to be sitting here with a laptop doing that and actually coming in before council meetings and setting this entire system up. And there's a hard drive. There's two hard drives over there. There's a computer sitting here and microphones for, you know, two sets of different microphones and such. So we're gonna be searching for somebody to help us out with that for Planning Commission and, and, and council. We'd like to continue getting the word out about the Community Action Agency. We're still providing help for those that were impacted by COVID. They could get free utilities for the past year. I'll clear back to April 2020, so if you know of anybody out there that needs some help, just have them contact the Community Action Agency, or they're welcome to call City Hall. We are holding a test to find more police officers and dispatchers. That'll be coming up end of July. The Chamber of Commerce had a employment drive last week. I know it got rained out, and then they had another one tonight. I would talk to Eric to see how it went, but we're hopeful that that helps some local businesses. Tonight, on your agenda, you do have some legislation regarding the two ambulances that we just picked up. So we'll be passing that, getting that done. Did want to mention, in the spring of 2021, we passed some legislation about refinancing bonds. At this point, we found another way to do this and save some more money. If you remember, we, we're gonna save over a million dollars over the course of those bonds. We think we could find a little bit more. So we're gonna be doing that and coming back to you later this fall. We have placed legislation on the agenda regarding memorandum of understanding with the Fairfield Township regarding the new stormwater line that we're putting in. Over 2,000 foot of that line will be in the township, so we're gonna agree to continue to maintain it. If you've been down there, I've got, I've got a small report here for you, but, you know, it's a four-foot line that we're, we're putting in there. And you know, you take some pretty specialized equipment to clean out something that big. Columbia Corridor is open. We're still waiting for the gas hookup. We just, Columbia Gas just ran that new line up there. We're gonna be installing a new service there. Electric panel was there, hooked up. And CompCo's agreed to donate, fabricate decorative partitions. So we're looking forward to that. We really appreciate everything they've done. Those, CompCo donated the sign. And we also are gonna do a fountain up there. And we've gotten several donations for pumps. We do have video surveillance cameras up in the corridor. And we look forward to people taking advantage of that at corridor. Pool parking lot is, is complete. We thank the R and B for that. We did, we have had some problems with the pool heater. We've called an engineer, engineer to work on that over the next couple of months to get a solution for next year. House and Barrett started designing that sewer line that we're doing off County Line Road. Mike and I worked on the, had a meeting with the auditors, and we started an audit for 2020. Tomorrow, we have that team's meeting. Some of you have expressed interest for the railroad street crossing letter that we got a couple of months ago. But we've had some very hot days this summer. We have not asked anybody to do the energy saving days. There's many, many factors that go into that, and we just simply have not had to ask. We may do that soon, but But, you know, may not make, seems like we should have done it already, but the factors weren't, weren't correct. We do have a MOU for the School Resource Officer. That contract was expiring the end of this year, or end of this month. And we do have legislation to put that back on for another three years. We do have a citywide fiber project going on right now, and a new firewall being installed at the electric garage. We do, we are doing a small portion of paving the next week or so. We were doing some berming out at Mets Road, and we're going to be doing wall on it, alley soon. And then, the electric department, they helped complete that insulation for the corridor, the electric service. And then, out at the park, we've had a project that, we had that workshop that was last month. And I asked Dr. Detweiler to come and talk about it just a little bit today, kind of bring council up to speed. For those of you who have not, you know, did not go to that workshop. And then, during council comments, I'm going to try to share my screen and go back to my manager's report, but I don't want to do that right now. So, with that, Dr. Detweiler?
Good evening, everyone. Let me say, it's great to be back in council chambers and put faces to so many people and comments here. That being said, thank you to Amber. Park Board's been through a lot the last two years, and without her help at our meetings, it would have been a disaster. So, thank you to Amber. Everybody should have in front of them a copy of some blueprint plans for a girls' softball stadium. I do have an extra, few extra copies if anybody in the audience wants them later on. As a recap, let me go through why we're here tonight. About a year ago, a local businessman, Randy Alexoff, from Verilou, here in Columbia, approached the RB Committee about the feasibility of a donation and the feasibility of building a new girls' softball stadium in Firestone Park. After you look at the plans, I'm sure it'll come to your mind that this is a very generous donation and a state-of-the-art facility that he wants to build for Columbia, for the park and the city, and through RB. Over the last year, Randy's met with the RB Committee several times, Park Board several times. Jim Pahala, who is his, a sports field consultant, Tucker Cope, who's going to be the local contractor for the project, and also, most importantly, the Girls Softball Association Group, he's met with several times. It's important to him that his donation covers the needs of the softball association for the girls here in Columbia. He's, during those meetings, I, many issues were discussed, problems, advantages, disadvantages. The result is the plans that you have before you tonight. As Lance alluded to, we had a workshop last month. During that workshop, Mr. Alexoff was there with his consultants and his, and Mr. Pahala, also the entire Park Board, local contractor, Tucker Cope, and also members of council. Mr. Tilio was there. Also, Dan Becker, our council representative to Park Board, was there. I felt it was a very good meeting. It answered a lot of questions. Also, our mayor was at that meeting. And I felt that a lot of questions and concerns were answered. Later on in the month, last month, the Park Board met, had further discussion on the project, and had an unanimous vote to approve to go forward with the project and the donation. Purpose for me being here this evening is one last opportunity. Council's been involved with this project, so I'd like to hear from Councilman Tilio and also Councilman Becker, any final questions? And of course, we would like your blessing and approval to go forward with the project.
I guess I'll start, I'll start up a little bit. I think there was a lot of thought in all of this. I think that people had some concerns, and I think that was laid to rest that night because there was quite an open discussion. The only thing that I had added was I was hoping that we would lay some blank conduit, open conduit, for down the road at some time in order to put a scoreboard that would need power, or maybe some lighting, or other things that may need some electrical, because there is, there is a little bit of space left behind a business there, that there would be some ample space for some different things that could be, you know, used to our advantage. So.
Two very good points that Dan mentioned. This project does not include lighting. And of course, one of the comments, the neighbors that live in that area, lighting's a concern. This project will be run as an RB project, just like we've so successfully done the last couple of years, whether it was the pool house, the gutters, the city's involved, R and B is involved. And it's worked out very, very well for us. Sometimes it's overlooked, but the city's very involved in these projects too. And we've assured them, I hope you'll agree with me, that the city will do whatever is necessary, if it means laying conduit, electricity, whatever, that being in Firestone Park, we're more than helping, willing to be helpful in any way we can.
Dan?
Yeah, so my comment, first of all, I did have a concern about going from the two fields to the one. But the discussion at the, at the workshop, I'm very comfortable that the Girls Softball Association is good with that. So, I, you know, I'm good with that. And looking at these plans, the amount of detail and thought that went into them, this is not just something that they threw together in five minutes. They, they discuss some very, very good surfaces, including the grass, and the, all of, all the details are very well thought out. The dugouts, for example, you know, they actually went to Leitonia, right? Leitonia has dugouts that are similar design. They're not dugouts. They're actually surface level, and they're, they're see-through. So, you know, if somebody's doing something in the park they're not supposed to be, imagine that. You know, they can, they can't hide in a dugout, for example. Little things like that, very well thought-out plans. So, I think, you know, I have no concerns with giving this my blessing. I think it was.
The way it's set up now is, this isn't Mr. Alexoff's first baseball stadium that he's built. There's a similar one in Poland and different areas. But they will be in charge of the field. Local contractor, Tucker Cope will be involved in the dugouts. And again, they did put a lot of thought into that. We have a whole new sports court area now, and how that fits in since it's right up against it was given much thought. Let me also add that the major concern was working with the Girls Softball Association. You're right, we're going from two fields to one, and they can't have enough with two fields. But through some discussion and negotiations, the Girls Softball Association is completely on board and very happy with what's going on at this time.
If the plans are any indication, this is going to be a nice facility. And, and also, I'm going to add, fairly easy to maintain from looks of it. It's not going to be the football stadium where we have the concrete and all that. It's, it's a very simple design, but it's, it should be very nice. Like I say, very well thought out, very detailed.
That was one of Mr. Alexoff's major concerns, is maintenance of the field. From the Park Board's standpoint, I mean, look at what we've been doing the last two years. So, it is a concern. But how this stadium will fit into our priority use committee in the park, which is going to be stepped up tremendously with everything that's going on, that's going to take some discussion. But understand, just like with what we did with the Firestones last year in the facilities, and turning the high school football stadium, baseball stadium, softball over to the school, how does this new stadium fit into that arena? How will they fit into priority use? But ultimately, this will still be a city facility. Once it's done, just like an example would be when we built the press box a couple of years ago, or the weight room. Those were outside groups that built them. And I'll, I'll say this, like with the press box, that did not cost the city, the park, or taxpayers a dime. It was all through donations. But when it was finished, that was gifted to the park, to the city, just like Harvey Firestone did with, when he gifted the park to the city. So, ultimately, maintenance is going to come back to the park, to you guys.
Yeah, I just think it will be, it's unlike the football stadium, which had a lot of maintenance issues. This will be simpler. It's because it doesn't have all the fancy construction. The field itself will be the hardest part to maintain, I think.
Tucker Cope's a very down-to-earth, simple, basic, I've heard him say a million times, cut the fluff. So.
I think it's really going to be maintenance-free with the type of materials that they use on the field itself and the drainage setups that they have thought through. It, it should really take, take care of itself a lot. And I would encourage all of you folks out in the public tonight, if, if there are any.
There's extra plans.
Left, you know, take a look at them. There's, I mean, there's even storage built into it. There's leachers built into it, and all the safety factors and that go along with the, with those types of fields, especially for the, for our handicap personnel.
Lance, can we see if we can post this on the, on the website? Some portion of it, kind of make it more, more available to the public. I think it's a great project to, to showcase some of the stuff we're doing at the park.
And once, once we have final approval, we're planning. Mr. Alexoff is somewhat shy with publicity, and that's been an issue for us. And we want to respect that, but we, once we have all of the approval put together, we'll have some announcements and articles and what's going on. He's been very, very gracious. I mean, it's hard to understand sometimes what we have to go through with permission, if you will, from Park Board and council and different arenas. And he was not prepared for that. But he's been very gracious, very generous, and it's been a pleasure working with him.
All the questions? Thanks a lot for the time you're putting into this.
No problem.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your work. Thank you.
Right, I think we should give you an extra zero on your paycheck.
Yeah. Yeah.
But thank you.
I said he would like to have our approval, so.
Yeah. I think we consult for a motion to approve. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve this project. Any questions or comments on the motion? Dan will call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Lance, do you have anything else at this point you want to add? We, you received in your packet the mayor's court report that you want to review. Is there any questions on that report? We are going to entertain two motions. Motion to concur with the city manager, Lance Willard, and chief of police, William Myers, to hire Sheldon Brownfield as part-time police officer, motion to that effect.
So, move.
Second.
Got a motion, a second? Any questions or comments on the motion? Call the roll.
Tilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Okay, and one more. A motion to concur with city manager Lance Willard and chief of police William Myers to appoint Tyler Mowry to the auxiliary police force.
So, move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Sauter?
Yes.
McBain?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Tilio?
Yes.
Very good. And at this point, I'll ask Mark Hudson to administer the oath to the two gentlemen.
Okay. First, right hand? So, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
So, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Constitution of the State of Ohio.
Charter and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
Charter and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties as part-time officer.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties as a part-time police officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon.
Aye. State of Maryland.
Aye, town of Maryland.
So, I swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
You solemnly swear that I protect the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances of the City of Columbia, Ohio.
Charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinance of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
Now, faithfully discharge my duties.
As auxiliary officer.
As auxiliary officer.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Congratulations. Comment that.
His mic's not off.
Is it working now?
I don't know.
That's a solid red. That's very good. The one in front of you is green, so. Or it's now red, so.
It was green. Green, red.
Good.
Okay. This would be a good time to say that Chief Myers is working on building up our, our staff in the police department. We're going to be having tests for police officers coming up here shortly, and we're working on, you know, building the staff back up. So, we appreciate your efforts, chief, in doing that. Thank you. I would just like to say at this point, just so everybody understands, having the Zoom is important now because this is a public meeting, and it is a way that we publish. and it is a way that we publicize the meeting. And that also allows people who want to attend the meeting to be able to watch it from home on the computer. So when we talk about Zoom, you know, there was a time we had to have it, but it, it is our system of uh, you know, keeping, keeping the meetings public. So as we struggle with how they work, um, you know, it's, it's going to be a positive thing. Okay, um, I want to review, uh, you've got a copy of the July 6th bill list. Are there any questions on the bill list? Okay, hearing none. I would like to entertain a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only.
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion second. Uh, Dan, we call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Okay, these are all business items. Ordinance number 21-0-3083, second reading. An ordinance amending chapter 1282, section 1282.05 of the Planning and Zoning Code of Codified Ordinances of Columbia, Ohio.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions or comments?
Uh, I'm just going to throw a reminder in there. This is actually the ordinance that will increase the maximum building height in a C4 district from 25 feet to 75 feet. It's been a while since we've looked at this stuff, so kind of nice to try to remember what they actually were.
Uh, any other comment? Dan, we call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-3084, second reading. An ordinance amending section five of the ordinance number 16-0-2862.
So move.
Questions or comments? Dan, we call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Okay, resolution number 21-R-573, second reading. A resolution to exclude the approval of the city of Salem, which approval would otherwise be required from alternate method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in 2022.
So move.
Second.
And questions? Call the roll.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes. Resolution number 21-R-574, second reading. A resolution approving a new alternative method of apportionment of local government fund monies to be distributed in 2022.
So move.
Second. You call the roll, Dan.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving to new business. Um, I would like to see if I could get a motion to read the fall, the first two ordinances as an emergency.
So move.
Second.
The end, call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-3085, this is an emergency. An ordinance, an emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the lease agreement for the city of Columbia, LSE, for $365,000 pertaining to the purchase of two 2020, is that Osage?
Oh, Sage.
Huh?
Oh, Sage.
Oh, Sage, thank you, Dave. Oh, Sage, type three ambulance on 2020 Mercedes-Benz Sprinter chassis.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions?
One comment, it does appear there's a typo on the agenda. It says emergency resolution, but I like, I believe it's an ordinance.
Correct.
McBane?
Yeah.
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
Okay, so a resolution number 21-R-578, emergency. An emergency resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding and to accept monies from the Columbia Exempt Village School District to be used exclusively for wages and related expense benefits to permit the city of Columbia Police Department to assign a school resource officer at the district's schools.
Second.
Questions or comments? Call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-3086, first reading. An ordinance amending appropriation ordinance 21-0-3069 by adding $24,000 in general fund for all the payment of current expenses as they may arise.
So move. Second.
Dan, call the roll.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Ordinance number 21-0-3087, first reading. An ordinance amending section two of ordinance number 20-0-3062, establishing a wage schedule for certain full-time and part-time employees of the city of Columbia.
So move.
Second.
A discussion on the motion? Dan, we call the roll.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-579, first reading. A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding regarding Fairfield Township storm water line maintenance.
So move.
Second. A discussion? Dan, call the roll.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Resolution number 21-R-580, first reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates is determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So moved.
Second.
Dan, we call the roll.
McBane?
Yes.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
And I know this is going to break your heart, but this is the last resolution.
Can we add a couple more?
Yeah. Resolution number 21-R-581, first reading. A resolution accepting the amount and rates is determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Dan, call the roll.
Liston?
Yes.
Attilio?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Souter?
Yes.
McBane?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we're going to move to uh, is there any public comments? Anybody out there would like to say anything tonight? Hearing none. Council members, you have any comments or at this point?
I have one. Great, uh, Braden Tucker, Dying Breed Diesel, got in touch with me and asked me to invite the town council, city manager, uh, Mr. Mark, et cetera. Uh, he wants to have a cookout at Firestone Park the night before the dying breed diesel family reunion. Please bring nothing but a chair. 5:00 PM to question mark. You are officially invited.
Okay. What a great guy.
Absolutely. Yeah, he certainly is. I've got a couple of comments this evening, and they just happen to all be dealing with uh, the folks that protect us, our officers here in town. Uh, and I'm sure some of you have seen this, but uh, while on patrol, Officer Bowley spotted a young lad helping his father do the grass and stopped and had a little chat with him. And I, I'm sure that the young lad might have felt intimidated, but after Officer Bowley had basically congratulated him on his endeavors, uh, it was a great thing, and it's a good thing that, that, that our forces do those for the, the children of Columbia. It, it pulls everything together and it ties it up nice and close. Uh, the second one is Officer Whitfield. On uh, the night of the fireworks on the Fourth of July, I was riding around like many other people trying to find a parking spot. And of course, uh, it was uh, rather jammed up, and Officer Whitfield was uh, almost to my immediate left, and he pulled his cruiser as far off to the side as he could. Graciously got out, walked up to a few people and had them move around, and it got traffic moving again, all without any encounters on the negative side. So I think that attitude goes a long way for, for our guys. Uh, the last one is Officer Claus. I've uh, had the privilege of having Kevin in class in high school. And he was as quiet then as he is today, and has done things behind the scenes that a lot of people don't know. But from day one that I had met Kevin, he uh, he wanted to be a police officer, and he's really accomplished that task. And what he has uh, done for the town is, is totally remarkable. And uh, I wish him good luck in his endeavors, and Chief, you've lost a good one.
Good comments, Dan. The police were, you know, they're the foundation of our community, so it is important. Anyone else?
Uh, I'm going to tag on a little bit to what Dan said, because I, you know, I watch Facebook quite a bit, and, and I've seen a lot of positive comments. Uh, Sergeant, Sergeant Bowley's uh, has had a couple of Facebook hero things. Um, additionally, uh, just general comments about some of the uh, the, the safety, like on, on uh, North Main Street. It seems like people are, are very happy with, with the way it's been improving, it seems like, so. Um, and uh, just generally, you know, I, every time I see the officers I'm about, they're always trying to talk to people and, and interact in a positive way. So I think our, our police force is doing a great job, and um, and uh, Chief, you know, I know you inherited a great force, and I think you're maybe even making it better. So I do appreciate that, and um, I want to comment on that, too.
Thank you, man. Lance, did you want to do another?
He, I, I will just have to improvise here. So um, about the last 15 minutes, this computer has been down. So uh, I cannot share my screen by any stretch, so um, don't believe that I can pull it up. I can, I can try really quick to do this, but I doubt that it's going to work, uh, so. Yeah, I'm going to go against my golden rule and uh, try to do something uh, live. Let's check it out, see if it'll work. Okay, I'm going to ask the administrator that is currently. No, I'm just, I'm just joking around, it's hilarious what's happening right now. So um, I did get a text from Amanda Banner, and she is now administrator of this meeting, which is just hilarious. And she's like, I have to get my daughter in the room, you know, and uh, so I'm going to ask this to see if uh, if she will respond to this, and we're going to try to go live here, so. She said, you do realize that I am the administrator? I said, yeah, so.
You did a good job tonight, too, Amanda.
One day I'll set up my computer in front of me.
Amanda, do you uh, do you hear me out there?
Yes.
Okay, do you see anything where it says share screen?
It didn't pop up, but I did click to allow participants to share screen.
Okay, we're going to try it again, here we go, this is amazing. Here we go. Okay, I had two slides, you guys are getting one. Okay, so this is West Salem Street here. So this is uh, North Main Street coming up here. Basically, I'm giving you a kind of a rundown of what's happening on West Salem Street. We started at Mill Creek, which is on the west end of uh, Salem Street. I don't have uh, the ability to Zoom or, or, or anything like that right now, but uh, we are putting in the storm line, it's a 48-inch line, and we started on July 5th, and we are moving east, and we are right here between Madison, right now Madison Drive, just got there today. And we're going to come up to the number two here, which is near where Middle Street and uh, Salem Street are. So our, our goal is to get through this section of Salem Street by the time school starts. That is a goal. So this is a trunk line that runs from Mill Creek to Middle Street. Starts out at forty-eight inch, goes down to forty-two inch. Guess I should have asked Amanda if she could see this. Can you see this, Amanda?
Yes, I can, I can see.
Okay, so after we get done with that trunk line, you'll see three, three letters down here, A, B, and C. That is Pearl Street, West Street, and Middle Street. We're then going to install stormwater lines down the, down those, in the, in the road. We're gonna dig up the road, and we're gonna do those individually, so the idea is not to have any more than one road ripped up at once. Again, that is a goal, just like a goal to get the Middle Street by a, a school opening. You know, that's what we're shooting for. So once we get the trunk line in, we're gonna pick A, B, or C, we'll do that, and we're going to, again, we're gonna be down the center of the roads. And our goal is by December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-one to have all of the, the stormwater lines installed. We'll come back in the spring, and we will repave the, those streets, and also we may be getting curb and gutter on A, B, and C. Maybe doing that this year, but I, but I, I think it'll probably be in, in, in early spring that we'll finish that job up. So the stormlines run in the streets. There are that, there's a couple that don't, but those, those people that they would happen to run through the yards have already been contacted, we have easements already. And, and we, you know, we're working that out, or have worked that out already. But the, you know, the schedule will be, you know, when you see it come down the road, that's, that's when, you know, that's, that's when we'll be there, but the driveways will be open at night. You know, if, if we do cut through people's residence driveways and road closures are gonna be to a minimum, or at least have, we're gonna try to have at least one lane of traffic. Of course, sometimes you get into, you know, the situation, you'll have to close it down. But right now, we we're, we're heading from that number one in the highlighted area to two. We are at Madison Drive, and we still have probably nine hundred more feet, maybe a thousand feet to even get to the city limits. So right now, we are in the township. As I said, we had some legislation on the, on the docket tonight to talk about who is gonna take care of that line in perpetuity from that point, from the township's point. Again, that's a four-foot line, it's a pretty large line. This, this, this project started back probably three, three years ago. We were awarded an eighty, or I'll, I'll break it down here, a seventy-five percent grant from FEMA to install this line or lines, stormwater system. A twelve and a half percent grant from Ohio EMA. A hundred and forty-three thousand dollars from C D V G. And also another hundred thousand from FEMA for administrative task, I should say. So out of that two point two million, the City of Columbia is gonna have to pay a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That's quite a deal. And when we were sitting here ten years ago, we were talking about stormwater. Stormwater, stormwater, stormwater.
This city has been talking about stormwater for a lot longer than that.
Yeah.
When I, when I first moved back to Columbia, that was one of the big topics at almost every council meeting for years, and.
Twenty-five years, I've heard it.
Yeah. Yeah, so in nineteen sixty-eight, the city council paid a engineering firm to do a stormwater study for the entire city. And they came up with the idea that we need stormwater lines.
That was money well spent.
Yeah. So back in twenty-ten, twenty-two thousand nine, two thousand ten, council did the same thing.
Right.
We paid a hundred thousand dollars for a study, and we ranked the ten most prominent flooding areas, and I have just described priority number one. And we're gonna, we're gonna have it done, and that is no fees out of, you know. We've heard of other communities putting on stormwater taxes and such to get these done. We cannot thank FEMA and Ohio EMA enough. This, this project that I just described is the second, only the second stormwater project in the state of Ohio to ever been funded by FEMA. So you know, your council had a lot to do with that, you know, getting it and supporting, supporting that, and we had county support, and we also had, I know Congressman Johnson and Tim Ginter, Representative Ginter supported this project. We do have a couple other projects on the horizon. We did just hear last week that the, the two projects that we had submitted last year, we did not get chosen for those, and that would be up by East Park Avenue, both, both sections up by Beverly and Ray, and then down by oh, Birdfish area, but we, we were invited to resubmit, so we will do that. Hopefully, we can continue to knock these off. If you look at the top ten list for stormwater, we've really made an impact on it. I believe number seven was Main Street, and we got that done. Also, out at Fairfield Avenue, we had some issues out there, and with that sidewalk project, we did do leave over fifteen hundred feet of stormwater line, so we, we are getting there, and you know, we're really proud the fact that we were able to bring, land this, this project, and you know, we look forward to it. I don't know if you've been out there, but Ruachin Gaffney, the contractors, we have a great super on that, on that job, and it is being well cleaned, well kept, and there are pretty good traffic controls out there, there's a light that, you know, aids the, the, the workers there. It started out really deep, it's, it was a really deep line, and it's coming up quick, but just had, you know, beg for your patience when, when the traffic does happen, but I, I believe they'll get into the, the city here in a couple weeks, so that's, that's my, that's my story. And that's everything I have.
Thank you, Lance.
Yep.
It is a great success story. The kind of irony is that when people don't get their basements flooded, they probably won't say anything.
Right.
You know, so it's one of those catch-twenty-two, so, but that area was very bad, and I'm glad we've really focused in on the projects to try to take care of it, I guess.
Yeah, you, you know, and all the neighbors, it showed up in the, in the years past, you know, two thousands, two thousand and one, we had a huge storm March of two thousand and three, and another one I know for, another one nine, another one in twelve. And we appreciate all that public input, which was a very important part of our, our, you know, approval process for this.
How many hundred-year storms did we have in one decade?
I know that we had three, three one-hundred-year floods within, within a few years, yeah, so.
Time really passes fast when you're having fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Lance.
Well.
I've got one other thing I'd like to say. We have talked about and gone through and been partially successful with what we wanted to do with the police officers. The Anne and company who's had enough to provide the funds for that.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but Skip, can you speak up, please?
The second, the second part of that was to have a meet and greet with the officers and the safety teams, fire, EMS, so on and so forth. That has been tentatively scheduled for the first week of August. I haven't heard a definite date, but everybody will be notified as soon as that's planned down, but it should be the first week of August.
Thanks, Skip.
Any other comments? Well, Rick, good luck in your future adventures, and thanks a lot for all the things you did for the City of Columbia, we really appreciate it. Thank you. Any other business?
Enjoy your retirement.
I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.